Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education of the School District of Superior. Like to call this meeting to order. We have met compliance with official notifications. Roll call, please.
Len Albright.
Here.
Nick Schumacher.
Here.
Dan Smith.
Here.
I'm Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Nick Olson.
Here.
President Olson.
Here. This time, would you please join me? I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Action taken at tonight's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. This meeting is a meeting Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on public comment signup sheet prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. I don't believe we have anybody that signed up and accurate. Thank you. All right. So again, the regular board meeting action. Today's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. Disposition of minutes from September 11, 2023, and September 25, 2023, as attached.
Paul Sisk.
Your number.
Move to proof.
Second. Motion and second to approve the meetings as attached. During discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Next up was our superintendent's report. There was an action item, consideration of overnight field trip request from Michael Hord. Eighth grade students to attend Washington DC and New York City during spring break 2025.
Motion to approve the field trip.
I can't.
It's a motion and a second to 25 field trip to Washington DC and New York City. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There were no discussion items. We had, uh, we have two informational items. The first one is our Spartan showcase.
Right. So, um, every month we like to recognize, um, staff and students within our school district that, um, really show, uh, what it means to be a Spartan, embody our motto of work respectful on across our schools. We are doing something a little bit different this year. We want to recognize specifically staff and students in every, every single building throughout the year and be a little bit more targeted. So, um, this first month, for the month of really September, we asked for nominations at Lake Superior Elementary and we received a handful of nominations and today we went out to Lake Superior Elementary and we recognized one student and one staff person. And I'll give you just a little bit of background on each of them. So, Shauna is our family engagement coordinator. She does a lot and I'll just kind of highlight some of the things that were said in her nominations. Um, she serves as this, as a student assistant, a parent coordinator, PTO president, parent volunteer, and in any other way that she can think of. She's relentless in maintaining a positive attitude and we're going to make sure all others have the best. And so we were able to recognize Shauna. She does a lot. She is, uh, very much a staple in that building. So it was fun to recognize her today. And then our student was Natalie Bukovich. Natalie is a fifth grader and I'll just read a little bit about her nomination. Natalie always goes above and beyond to be a student at Lake Superior Elementary. She's always willing to help out students who are younger with her. When we got there today, she was working with kindergarteners and she helps kindergarteners every day, kind of start their day, um, in the lunchroom and getting them ready for class. Um, she's always seen greeting students, walking them into school, helping them get off the bus. She's a leader in sports. She's a great role model to, um, younger students. Um, she's always kind, respectful, and leads by example. So congratulations to Natalie. It was fun to see her today. We notified her family. So, um, they are aware of that as well. So, yeah, so there are a lot of nominations. Um, I don't even remember how we, maybe it's a small school. So remember there's, you know, most schools all, you know.
Shall we say?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's good.
Her reaction was priceless.
Yeah, she was surprised. Yeah. Yeah, we did it in front of her class. Oh, so.
And each person also received a water bottle too, made by Spartan.
Yeah, as a gift.
Actually, expert.
Yeah.
Awesome. I like that it's done at the schools in front of their peers.
That's where it's meaningful, where they're in front of their staff they work with and the students that they go to school with. So we tried to change it up. They're all invited to come to our board meeting where we also recognize them, but we figured it's better to be out at the schools where people know them. So.
David, how are we handling this? And are you sending out a separate?
This will be part, both of these will be part of our newsletter.
Okay.
Uh, the middle school, the high school, and our board office have these graphics on our, uh, TVs. So definitely be seeing that.
I've already seen it on Facebook today too. Yeah.
And also on social.
On that Facebook.
Yeah, I saw it.
It's very action.
That was very fun. Okay, um, you are up next. So our student representative is joining us for the first time. Welcome on.
Thank you guys.
What do you got for a report today?
Well, I feel like we have a decent amount to cover just since been a little longer since school started, but, um, yeah, so back to school, our, um, our bathrooms, our new bathrooms on the third and second floor have really helped out the issues in the bathroom.
Been well received.
Yeah, as a student, I don't think I've stood in line one time.
Nice.
First floor, there's still a lot of chaos, but I think it's going to be difficult to manage that, no matter what happens down there. But that was a really nice addition to the school and I've only heard good things about that. And then I'm sure you guys have been waiting here about the phone policy. That will be a big thing coming up here too. We're about to send out our student survey. So I'm sure last year it was the bathroom thing. This year I'm sure that's going to be like the only thing on our agenda, but I know the staff and I personally, I don't have an issue with it at all. I think that all the students are a lot more engaged in classes and they've been, it's been good. There's been a lot less disruption. As a senior, I thought there was going to be a big transition for some of my senior classes, just being able to go on your phone for four years, but I think it's been good and I think it's been a good adjustment for students. So yeah, um, we're in the process of our freshman elections right now as well, and we held interviews today and their biggest concern as a freshman was just that they don't have as much like communication and like knowing what's going on. Like homecoming week, it's a big week with a lot of events and they said that they could have used a little bit more like flow of information and a little bit better communication on both the staff end and our end. Um, yeah. So then my other next big point was homecoming. That went really well this year. We did a little different stuff than usual. So there really wasn't any class scheduled during homecoming day. I don't know if you guys didn't even know this, but we just had one hour of advisory where they did a door decorating activity. And then we went right into our pep rally assembly and then the students went out and watched the powder puff games.
Oh.
So that was, that was fun and new and exciting because not much school gets done on homecoming Friday anyway. So we did get, like, get one big fun day of events and yeah. So then after that, everyone else went up to the parade and that also went well. There was a lot of community members there, feeling more than usual. So that was cool to see. Yeah. And I guess the only really negative note we have on homecoming was the score of the football game. So.
And the rain.
And the rain, yes.
The rain's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was another thing was the powder puff on the field went good, but in the stands, it was a little difficult just since the rain doesn't help. The rain was.
The rain and the wind.
But, um, fall ball just took place this Saturday and we had a record attendance, which was cool to see. So a lot of kids said the DJ was good as well. So I guess it's a good note. Um, um, one negative from so far this school year was we had a speaker, um, Wednesday, the 27th of September. Uh, it went very poorly. Um, the message was good about social media and the benefits of staying off your phones and stuff like that. So I guess it kind of related back to the new phone policy, but one guy in a gym standing in front of the whole school with two computer screens. I don't know if you were there.
No, I heard about it. I, I guess my thought was it was supposed to be, I thought, in smaller groups, like ninth grade, 10th grade. You know, I thought they would hear it in smaller groups. So he must not have been able to pull that off.
That would have definitely helped.
Better. Yeah.
It was supposed to last an hour and a half and they cut it to 45 minutes and it there was no focus. Students were just on their phone and getting up and leaving. So I guess if we have an event like that, it's cool to have just on the middle of a weekday and that was a cool thing to do.
Did you guys talk to Mr. Fuzzy about that? Yeah, it is part of that.
I did.
Okay, that'll be a good thing. That'll be a good thing that you guys talked through.
I did talk to some staff and, and a lot of staff said it during the day too, that the day that that was not a great rep for Superior High.
Yeah, didn't make up. So.
Yeah. So that's kind of, oh, parent teacher confidence was my last note. That was good. Um, it was kind of cool to have the whole family connection night that they had. So there was a ding pink night and the boys soccer ran a mental health night, which was also cool. So and then there was a lot of there as well. So they had the human development center, encouragement clinic, boys and girls club, and then Amber Wang, they all came in. So that was cool. And yeah. So that was a positive. Good.
Great. Any questions?
I'm glad you mentioned. I had to rid down the volleyball and the boys soccer and stuff, but I would like to congratulate you though on the girls golf team on a pretty fantastic season.
Thank you.
You had some individual honors, but I think that the girls' season in and of itself performed, uh, better than past few years and stuff.
Yeah.
One, so second in the conference, uh, or tied for the.
Tied for conference with Hayward. Yeah. So our goal all year was to make it to sectionals team and win conference and tie for first place for conference and we're able to make it to sectionals as a team. So that was pretty special. And then girls tennis, they just wrapped up their season too. And then one more week left of football and couple more weeks of soccer and volleyball. So fall sports are almost finished.
Senior is going to go fast.
Yes.
And every senior who sits here, try every minute, probably fast.
Well, thank you. We're sure, sure glad you're here.
Thank you.
For more meetings and information from you.
Thanks.
Okay, nothing else? Nope.
Thank you.
Next at the, uh, committee, the whole meeting on October 2nd, we heard reports from Lake Superior Elementary Principal Rick Flaherty, Superior Middle School Principal Aaron Lebers, and last week, October 1 through the 7th, Wisconsin School Board's meeting. Thank you, each and every one of you for what you do on our school board. Our next, uh, agenda item was our board committee reports, the operations committee, action items, none, discussion items, none, informational items. We very wonderful presentation from our director, uh, Jamie Wilson of our food service and all that they had done this past summer, going into the fall, what he wants to do, uh, his plans for his staff and it's pretty, um, it's pretty inclusive as we heard. And he certainly works hard. I know that when we were there on, was it Wednesday for our Thursday for our meeting?
Wednesday at the high school, I mean.
Wednesday after school and stuff. I mean, we watched the kids in the lunchroom afterwards, you know, and stuff and in and out. I mean, he's got everything ready and kids enjoy it very much. So we certainly have a great director and we certainly have a wonderful food service in our school district. So with that, I would accept a motion the operations committee report.
So. Sign.
Motion and second to accept the operations committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next was the teaching and the committee action items, none, discussion items, none, informational items. Committee of the whole on October 2nd, Kate Tech, our director of continuous improvement and assessment, gave us a base on our fall bench benchmark assessments. The optional ACT for juniors, which was very good to hear about. And then, uh, September 29th, the staff development day and the things that the teachers did on that day really to prepare themselves with information and data for the parent teacher conferences. That is the end of that report. So is there a motion to accept teaching and learning report?
Not to accept.
Sign.
Motion and sec, and a second to accept the teaching and learning committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Next was the budget and insurance committee, action items, gifts, grants, and bequests. The administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in September of 2023.
Move to proof. Again.
There's motion and second to accept the gifts, grants, and bequests. Is there any further discussion? And the start of a school year in a pretty, pretty impressive list donations. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Discussion items, preliminary 23, 24, full year projections, third Friday enrollment. Committee of the whole on October 2nd, David C presented an update on the third Friday count. Actual transfer of service equalization aid, equalized property valuation and levy information will be updated on October 15th. I think that's still a pretty solid date.
It's 16.
Okay. Oh. Yeah. We'll get happy news on the 16th for the boundaries and the budget. The preliminary budget will be published 15 days prior to the budget hearing since October 30th. Informational items, the budget hearing is scheduled for October 30th at 5:00 PM. Um, will that, are we going to hold that here?
Going to hold what? But yeah, the hearing. Yeah.
And then, uh, the fund 10 revenue and expenditure preliminary reports issued. There are motion to accept the budget insurance committee report.
Motion to accept.
Sign.
Motion and second to accept the budget insurance committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Personnel negotiations committee, action items, administration recommends approval of the October 23 new hires and separations report.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion and second. To approve the October 23 new hires and separations report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. There are no discussion items, no informational items. With that, I would accept a motion to accept Personnel Negotiations Committee Report.
Motion to accept.
So again.
Motion is second to accept Personnel Negotiations Committee Report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next was the policies and rules committee, action items, administration approved. Excuse me. Administration proposes the approval of changes to the following policies based on the older recommendations in order to be in compliance with federal law updates. This is the second and final reading. Policies first read at the October 2 Committee of the whole. Administration approves opposing approval of the following policies. Second, reading of policy 2210 curriculum development.
Motion to accept. So again.
Motion and second to accept the second reading of policy 2210 curriculum development.
I just want to point out on the back on the board agenda that it's, there's typos under. And can you go back so people see that? I just want to make sure. It says first reading on those bullets, which should say second reading. So we'll correct that in the minutes. Okay, back to the policy. Sorry. I just wanted to point that out.
That's, thank you. I should have. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. The next is the second reading of policy 3121, criminal history report, record check, professional staff.
Motion to accept.
Motion and second to accept the second reading of policy 3121. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy 4121, criminal history record check of support staff.
Motion accept.
Motion and second to accept second reading of policy 4121. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy 142.5 vacancies. Motion to accept.
Second.
It's motion and second. Prove the second reading of policy 142.5 vacancies. Since the one that we made some changes to. Make that larger and. Rearrange the letters. Taking out some letters, really using bullet points. So R A, the board shall seek qualified candidates at that dot and contacts with appropriate organizations. There we went, the bullet point points that all applicants, the first one, the board may interview and appointment by the board to fill a vacancy. Then what we talked about was adding B then, letter B, the board may choose not to fill the vacant position when the vacancy occurs in the third year of the current board member's term. At the other green highlighted areas. Is there a motion to accept? Or there was, you got a second. All right. So the only, the only thing on B, um, so what I'm wondering is if it happens right away in that person's third term, do we want to say like six months or?
I wondered about that too, but you could just use that as part of your determination whether you use B or not. You know what I mean?
Gives you the option.
It gives you the option.
All right, just because.
Doesn't mean you have to do it. You could say it's so early in the term, we should still fill it. Or you could say it's so late.
Right.
It gives you the option.
It gives you the.
Put any points.
Yeah.
It leaves it open.
I thought the same thing, but I think you want it maybe far open.
disregard what I said. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There are no discussion items, no informational items. There are motion to accept our policy rules committee report. Motion.
Stop.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the policy rules committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Other reports by members of the board. Let's see, I guess school board member just one of school visits that are coming up and, uh, has provided us with a spreadsheet and then you'll get notices via your email of the day that you're, you're going to what school and at what time. Other reports from members of the board.
To piggyback, I've had the, uh, listening sessions too, and I think those are going well for what I've gotten to so far.
I've had a lot of positive feedback.
And Amy's keeping us updated and all the else as well. But it was nice to hear all staff giving pros and cons on everything. And I will also say I applaud you, Amy, for bringing up standards based grade in the last one too.
Might as well just talk about it.
Anybody else have any reports?
Well, Len has the, the one on the WASB resolution.
Yep. So WASB, the Policy and Resolutions Committee, meeting number one, that was last Friday night and that went from seven to 10 and then most of Saturday. I met with approximately 25 other board members from throughout the state to review the 2023 resolutions submitted by school boards. There were nine board resolutions and one WASB staff resolution that were submitted for this year. Uh, we had large group and small group discussion for each of the resolutions. We were given three things to consider, um, on whether to move a resolution forward or not. And that was, is it timely? Is it worthy of debate and should it be considered by the delegate assembly? Um, we moved all but one of the resolutions forward to the November meeting and had them add the additional WASB staff resolutions that the delegate assembly didn't get to last January. There were two, two that they didn't get to. Uh, the reason we added those two were because last year there were 25 resolutions that went down to the state. This year we only, we're moving nine forward. So they thought it'd be an opportunity to add those two that didn't get, uh, it didn't, didn't get to last year. Uh, President Olson will get the final drafts of the resolutions after that November meeting. So the board can review them in December and in advance of the January delegate assembly meeting. And that next policy resolution meeting is November 3rd and 4th down in Green Lake. And right now, I guess I'd I'd like to see if you'd allow me to make that statement that we kind of pushed from last week, last month to tonight.
Yes.
All right. This was brought to my attention about six weeks ago that a board member had concern and felt that I should not have been getting paid while coaching the girls soccer team. And that goes against statute 120.20. Now let me take away all the suspense and tell you that state statute 120.20 allows a board member to coach, but it would, it would need to be as a volunteer and not be paid. With that said, I'm going to be clear that I didn't break any criminal laws by coaching and being a board member at the same time and getting paid. I didn't lie about it. I was always open and honest. I was willing to do the right thing with full input and approval from a previous board. I recently gave President Olson and then the entire board the documentation and evidence of this. To summarize, I was asked to apply for the girls soccer coaching position in 2011. If memory serves me correctly, it was the previous athletic director. I asked at the initial time if that was a problem or conflict and I was told, no. After going through the interview process, my recollection is that I was the only applicant. I was chosen as the girls soccer coach. On June 12th, 2012, the board met without me there to discuss the issue of potential board member conflict of interest. When I came back to the meeting, the board informed me that I did not need to resign either position, that I could continue to coach while on the board. In December of 2014, previous superintendent Stevens asked our attorney Kyle Torvannan to issue an opinion. In an email dated December 11th, 2014, Kyle did say there was not a clear conflict of interest, but there were some troubling guidances from the Wisconsin League of Municipalities and the UW extension based upon a different concept that doctrine of incompatibility of offices. Kyle stated that based on that information, he will consult with the Wisconsin School Attorneys Association to gather their input. He stated he would try to get a clear answer as soon as he could. On December 14th of 2014, I wrote back to Kyle in an email and asked, now that the WSAA is aware of the issue, am I correct in assuming that I'd have to give up one of the positions or would have to forfeit my position on the board immediately if they determine that it's a conflict? On December 15th, 2014, Kyle responded and his answer was no. That the WSAA is just an organization for attorneys. They have no power, authority, or desire to compel any result. On October 5th of 2015, Kyle emailed his opinion to Superintendent Stevens regarding state statute 120.20. I did not see this opinion until sometime in 2019 and after reading it, it's pretty obvious I was never meant. It was never meant to be seen by me. This opinion gave a couple of options. One was to give up one of the positions and the second was to continue serving as the coach until someone raised the issue at some point and made a complaint. If a complaint were made, a decision would need to be made. So this second option states that if a complaint were made, it would be then and only then would I be provided with the decision to which position I would want to keep and which one to relinquish. Our current HR administrator brought to my and Kyle's attention in 2019 that there was a state statute saying a board member could coach but not get paid. This was the first time I'd been told that a board member could coach, but should not be paid. Up to this point, the concern was whether it was a conflict for a board member to coach. We discussed the opinion that Kyle wrote back in 2015. where I was again told by legal counsel that we could continue to wait until someone had an issue with it, or in other words, kick the can down the road based on that 2015 opinion. So please take note that my coaching while continuing to be on the board was open and honest. I asked if I needed to address this, and I was told no. The board addressed this in 2012 and told me there was no conflict. I didn't lie about it or tried to deceive anyone at any time, but only followed advice I was given. I don't coach to stay on the board, to gain power or abuse my authority as a board member. I coach for the love of the game and to teach kids the skills to play the game and life lessons that they can carry with them their entire life. This hasn't been a secret since Brooke asked me last year if I got paid to coach, and I said yes. So I've wondered why it got brought up now, since a number of board members knew about it last year. I have my suspicions, but I'll probably never know. There was never any malice intended, and I continued, I only continued based on the advice I was given. The real issue isn't that I coached, but that I got paid to do it. Please note that I have not received full pay for the last 10 years and only 50% pay in the last four years. I met with Brooke, President Olson, and our HR director on September 25th of this year, and I asked Brooke what she wanted me to do. I offered to resign immediately, pay back the money from 2019 on, resign this coming March, or coach without pay. I was open to all options, but I could not get an answer. Brooke told me she understood why it happened prior to 2019. It had, but had issues with the years 2019 to today and felt all board members should be involved. President Olson then met with each board member after I sent them all the documentation and timeline. President Olson called me last Friday to tell me the results of his meeting. After some discussion, I asked what they wanted me to do. I was told Brooke, Ed, and Nick Schumacher wanted me to resign quietly and not bring it to open session. After thinking about it, I didn't feel that resigning quietly after 23 and a half years on the board was really going to work that well because someone would want to know why. I also wanted it to be known that resigning from the board based on being out of compliance with the state statute isn't required. Getting back into compliance with the state statute is what should be done. But for the record, I paid the money back to the district from 2019 through 2023 last week. So I am now retroactively in compliance with what, with when I found out about the state statute 2120.20. I spent a lot of time thinking about what I should do regarding all of this. But what really helped me make my decision was something Brooke said to me at our meeting to discuss options a couple of weeks ago. She said she valued my experience, and the board needed my knowledge and history moving forward with redrawing district boundaries. However, after seeing the results of the recent board appointments, I feel my history and knowledge of the workings of the board are no longer needed or wanted. It was difficult to watch what took place during the last two board member appointments. I saw a board vote for what's best for them instead of what was best for the district. To see the candidates with the most experience who could have hit the ground running and worked with the board for the next six to eight months, not even make it into the second round, was disheartening. If most of the board has no interest and experience from previous board members, I can't imagine they care about any of my past knowledge or, and experience. This isn't the way I planned on leaving this board after 23 and a half years. But due to its current makeup, I feel it would be best for me to step aside and let this current board move forward with the people they feel best fits their narrative. In my 23 and a half years as a member of the Superior School Board, I've seen a lot of good things happen. Completion of four new schools, a new sports complex, and passing of the largest school referendum in the state history at that time. For every accomplishment and success, there are many difficult, sometimes very controversial decisions that had to be made. I've also had the honor of serving with many great board members over the years, and I would like to thank all of them. So please consider this my resignation from the Superior School Board effective immediately, and note that I believe I am now in full compliance with state statute 120.20. So we from this. That's it. Oh, the audience. Thank you.
Mr. Aldrick, I do want to thank you for your service for the 23 years that you've been a very, very valuable member of this board and of this community. And your interests, my eyes have always been to do what our purpose in this district and that is to serve. Generally, thank you for that, Len.
I had also said the same to you, Len. Um, there's a lot that's left out here. A lot. I don't really feel that it's appropriate to air everything out. But when you had met with me, you kept asking me and over the phone what you wanted, what I wanted from you. And my response wasn't that I wanted all board involved. I kept telling you I wanted you to decide what was the right thing. I said it was not appropriate for me to decide what you should do. And I said, if you couldn't decide, then I guess we do need to go to the entire board. That is what I said. It's frustrating because I did know about this early on. Uh, it was unintentional. It was not digging. Uh, when I got elected, I was looking to continue subbing. And I had asked Kelly Cohen at the time if there was any way to do so. And she said, well, there was, you know, a resolution passed that coaches could coach but not get paid. Perhaps that's something that you could pursue. I called down to Madison. I called people. Next thing I know, I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, Len coaches. I sat down and talked to you, and yes, you were not. You, you had said you got paid. You weren't secretive. It wasn't that. But I thought, oh, my gosh, now what do I do with this? I'm sitting on a broken state statute. I'm newly elected. What am I supposed to do? You're the board president for crying out loud. It put me in a really crappy situation, in my opinion. I, I didn't want to do this. I kept saying that. I didn't want to do this. And so then slowly I started talking to Steve about it. Slowly I talked to Amy about it. You know very well that things take time, just like you said about the other situations that we've had. Nothing moves fast. It wasn't six weeks ago that this just erupted. It was slowly over time here that we've had to have discussions and talk about things. My intentions were to try to have you do what was right quietly. We didn't want to make a big deal of this. Like again, I feel horrible. I, I told you I appreciated your service for 20 some years. I'm sorry that it's ending like this, but I I don't know what else to say. After 2019, it is correct what you said. After 2019, where it was brought to your attention by Molly and Amy, at that point, why? The other parts, if the board voted you, there were so many things that happened that weren't even correct as well, going into closed session. That's illegal. Like so many things along the way were not correct in what was being handled. And at, at that point, when Molly asked you, I just said, why did you continue taking it? And you said, because Kyle said. Like again, I feel terrible. I really do. But I don't know what else to say. After state statute being broken for years, I don't know what to say. Thank you very much for all of your time. Thank you for everything that you've done. I respect you greatly. Anybody who serves in a position like this, I can appreciate and thank very much. And I'm sorry that it ended like this.
I'll, I'll say, Len, thanks for your service. But I do think what you're doing is the right thing. On top of that, we are the ones that have been here are elected by this district, by people put us in this position, and um, us choosing persons to fill vacancies, vacant seats are us speaking for the people that elected us. So to Nick and Diane, I feel like you guys are very much the appropriate persons to be sending these seats. You guys are what's best for the district as we were selected to do what's best for the district. So I I welcome you two. I, I don't like, I don't like that.
People that had most, any made it to the second rounds.
Well. Yeah, I guess. I just want to make sure they know all they got here and they are, I think, what's best for the district to move forward, so.
And I will say the documents that I've received read differently than how I think you interpreted them. And there were some that were pretty straight up saying, no, you should not accept pay.
So that's decent to me.
No, I don't think this serves a purpose for us to be going back and forth with dialogues. Are there any further district, district or program highlights?
No.
Consideration of bills and pre-approved bills? Need a motion to approve? Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and second for pay the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. It's time I adjourn this meeting.
Welcome to your meeting.